Good evening, citizens of Lewisburg Town Council. And welcome to our September Town Council meeting. We'll begin by having our roll call.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Stover.
Yes.
Councilwoman Woods.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stein.
Here.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilwoman Baker.
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wright, could you give us our indication for this evening, please?
Most holy and most eternal God, Lord, as we come to you once again, thank you for another day. Thank you, Lord, for those that have come out this evening to be about the town's meetings. Thank you, Lord, for everything you're doing throughout the town of Lewisburg and what you have yet to do for us. Lord, just go with us, be with us, and let everything be done decently and in order. Thank you, Lord. These are blessings in your most precious and holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, the adoption of the agenda. Also, before we begin, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for this evening. Items number 10 and number 12 on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to table those two items until our October meeting. The zoning ordinance map amendment, as well as the revised cemetery rules and regulations. Those two items, items number 10 and number 12, to be amended and tabled to our October meeting. I've made the motion. Could I get a second? It's been moved and properly seconded that we do amend our agenda to table those items. Zoning, ordinance map amendment, as well as revised cemetery rules and regulations be tabled till our October meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mayor, can I have everyone turn their mics on so we can get close catch?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number five, approval of the minutes for August 12th. Our regular meeting as well as our closed meeting for the August 12th. Could I get a motion?
I make a motion to amend the minutes from the August 12th and the closed session.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes from our August 12th, 2025 meeting, as well as the minutes from our closed session on that date as well. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item number six, this is the time that we have our public comments. Citizens, you can come forth with any issue that you wish to discuss, that you would like to have the council to know about. And that's three minutes for that. And I have several that have come forth to make comments. And I'll begin. I have Christina Nels Trowner.
Yeah, it's just public comment.
Yes. Yes, you can.
So I just wanted to address who many of the neighbors are requesting that the proposed rezoning not be approved.
Excuse me. Let me, just for the record, could you quote your address and name, please?
My name is Christina Nels Trowner. My address is 107 Triple Crown Room, Lewisburg, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Um, my parents are Gerald and Gail Nels. They have lived at 213 Tanglewood Drive, that's the 70, which is over 50 years. There have been multiple things put over there. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the area, if you've driven over there. But there's business developments. There was a school. They've added additional housing in the neighborhood. And there's an apartment complex. And then now they want to add the townhomes. So with all these developments, there's also the DMV, and we know the crisis they're in. But with these developments, there have been increased traffic in the area. There's roadway damages that were so bad when they did the last houses that we didn't even drive our cars out that way. We complained, and they were not taken care of. The DMV parking lot is overfilled. There's a daycare that has consistent drop off and pickup in the area. As I was reading through this Lewisburg, North Carolina 2030 comprehensive plan, I noted a few things that I was curious about when I was reading it because on page 38, it was talking about the land use and that the townhomes, which are considered single-family units, would be three to four per acre. There's only four point, I believe, six thousand acres out there. But they're requesting to put 53 townhomes there. If anybody went over there or had a child that went to that school, you will know that the traffic was horrific, and you could barely even pass through to get home. If they were going to do three homes, then it would be 13.86 homes total. If they were to do four on the 4.62 acres, that would be 18.48 homes. So I don't know how they are planning on putting 53 homes in that small portion of an area. There's also doctor's offices, the insurance agency. There's another lot over there for sale for another commercial property. We do understand that progress has to happen, that they need housing. I have two college kids myself. When they get out of college, I know how expensive housing is. However, we do think that 53 units is way too much to try to squeeze into that one little area, especially when there's no flow in and out. And there's only one way in and the other side going off to 56. And people also use Dogwood as their cut through traffic through the neighborhood. So it's just a few things that we wanted to consider before you make your decision. And I know you tabled it, but I do appreciate you listening to what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Scott Strickland.
Scott Strickland, 84, 35, Highway 56. I can't even take it on this almost. I'm excited to come to your day. We had an interesting day yesterday with the SIR group. We've been training in medical and stuff. And a police officer, which is in my group out of Frankerton, had an interesting day. She had gestured little baby on the side of the road. So training is good. She knew all about taking and burying some medical stuff that she did. And it went to use when she stopped to see what was mounted with the lady that side of the road. She opened the door, she rolled into that. But what I come to talk about tonight is, at your last meeting, I learned of some surplus properties that could assist the Bunsir community versus the monster. And we meet the requirements if the town so chooses to donate. We are all 501(c)(3). We have other requirements with the state of North Carolina as well. We, if we so choose to go further, we've got all the things signed with the state of North Carolina to go in, fire, or medical, whatever we want to do at that time. But those radios that you got on surplus would definitely help us out. And as I talked about, the search went on the river, you know. Cell phone service is limited to none out there. Luckily, we got the KUKI radios from the county. But that was only so many. And then, but with y'all's radios, if we could get y'all to work with us and donate or work out some kind of something, we would love to take them and then put them to good use. I talked to Lee about it, and I talked to Sean about it. And, you know, it's up to y'all to decide what you want to do with your surplus property. And so I'm here tonight to let you know that we are interested in them. And if you could come up with some kind of resolution or whatever, it would help us out greatly with communications. And that's all I've got. And thank you for all that you did.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm doing a couple checks on to make sure that we're, because we're municipal, they're nonprofit, that we don't cut anything.
All right, Mr. James Macklin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. I am also with the Bunsir group as Commissioner Woods, and I think I recognize you as well. I'm sorry. James Macklin, 26, William Perry Road, Lewisburg, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Should have known to do that first. Even though our shirt says Bun Sirting, we cover the entire county of Franklin County. Yes, we are sponsored by Franklin County as a whole. But we receive not $1 of money or funds from the county. So what Mr. Strickland just, you know, was talking about, anybody that has worked in fire service, rescue service, EMS service, or really your everyday work, communication is the number one issue when something goes wrong. Like Scott said, you know, I had the privilege of working all nine days when we were searching for the young boy. Communication was a problem. Walking through the woods beside the river, cell phones didn't work. I didn't have a radio. So if something had to me out there or my team, hopefully, the one person that did have the radio knew how to use the radio and also could get out on it. So that's one thing, you know, we would like to, if we could get surplus equipment like that at a minimal or, like he said, free, that would really help us out. Now, we have talked with your police chief of doing some things here in Lewisburg, because we've already done some things here. And again, there are two-way radios would help with that. Events and stuff, we do events. We're trained in traffic control. As part of our medical training, it's required that you're trained in how to do traffic control now. A lot of us have went a lot further with it and gotten the national certifications for traffic control so that we would be an asset in a time of a huge fire or a huge incident. God forbid, I'm not going to wish it upon Lewisburg or Franklin County. But, you know, it's tornado season. It's hurricane season right now. You know, we're coming up on the anniversary, we just had an anniversary of one major hurricane that devastated Franklin County, and, you know, coming up on the anniversary of another one. So we don't want to be able to not communicate and everything. So that's why I rose to speak with everyone. Again, thank you for what you all do. We know you're looking out for the best of your community. And we're here as an asset for you. And, you know, we are, we are an option for you to help with things, whether it's fire department, police department, or whoever. We want to work, build that relationship, and any equipment that we need. We either have to pay for it or try to beg for it. So thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Beverly Kegley.
Evening, Beverly Kegley, 120 Dollar Street, Lewisburg, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to represent the Franklin County Interstate Council in a project that we sort of did a start and then a quick stop on a couple months ago when we were talking with the fire chief about the swift water equipment that was needed. And in just a general conversation, we were talking about, and of course, some of you will not remember it probably, that the swimming pool at the White House was built for President Roosevelt with pennies in jars across this country by the schoolchildren. So we said, why don't we take up some money and bring some change here and help our fire department get some swift water equipment? We did. We made some jars. We thought it was a great idea. And then we didn't go forward. We're going forward tonight. I was at a meeting in Budner this morning with John Taylor, who is the Northeast Regional Director for Senator Bud. And he had been at our office a few weeks ago. And we were talking about all the things that the Interstate Council has done. And we said, you know, change for change. He really, really liked that idea. So... Here is your first donation, John Taylor, for your swift water. Friday night on the bar, and these jars will be spread out around town. Please put your change in it. Let's get this swift water equipment so the mayor doesn't call me and ask me, is he in the river? Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Moore.
Patricia Moore, 207 Tanglewood Drive. So my hope is Calico, the new apartments to be built. And I'm just here to say that it's going to bring a lot of traffic, I do believe. The entrances that have been laid out to be put are four different entrances coming off of one corner. And I've only been there three years. I was there when the school was there, and it was a lot of traffic then. So I'm just here to say that I think that it would be a travesty, really, to put that many apartments in that small space with all this going around already. Ms. Nels, who spoke, said mainly what I wanted to say, so I won't take it for time. But I will say that I think it would be a major error.
Thank you. Ted Jones.
Evening, Mayor. Ted Jones. I reside at 120 Co. Wood Drive, Lewisburg, also 10510 Mark Court in Lewisburg. I will say good evening to you, Mayor, and to the members of Town Council.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to voice concern in regards to this new trash collection policy that has been everyone, citizens of Lewisburg, have received in the last few days. From what I have talked with neighbors, friends, people in the community, highly disappointed in this. Not a lot of due diligence was done in the enforcing of this, just to gain statistics. Our taxpaying dollars, a lot of people I've spoken with feel that is being wasted. Trash cans were purchased, and when we received the trash cans, we were promised that nothing would change. However, now we have citizens receive this letter. Regardless to whether they're physically able or not physically able, they're now being required to push their can to the road. I don't think the town wants to be hearing from citizens with broken hips. I spoke with several this weekend, people approaching their 90s that have lived in this community for many, many years, and they're highly disappointed in this decision. To top it off, our many households, if you get out and ride around, especially over the holiday weekend, saw a lot of these garbage cans with trash running over, trash hanging outside. Again, we pay them twice weekly for garbage pickup, and now it's being cut down to one time a week. The decision to go to this route is certainly going to have a significant impact in our visual looks of Lewisburg. Overflowing bins are going to become an eyesore. It's negatively going to impact the overall cleanliness and appearance of our communities here in Lewisburg, especially concerning the homeowners and people that I have spoken with who take pride in their property and also the town's image. The accumulation of trash is also going to create a foul smell. And if you've heard of other towns that have dealt with that issue, also going to have buzzards and things like that hanging around. But I'm sure the citizens of Lewisburg do not want to deal with it. So in closing, I'm going to remind you of one very important thing tonight that I really want you to seriously think about this before continuing to move forward and when making decisions regarding this. If we all live long enough, one day, we're going to see ourselves in a situation where we are not physically able to push a garbage can, something that simple, to the street. So think about that and put yourself in the shoes of our concerned citizens in Lewisburg. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Willie Mullins.
How are you doing tonight? My name is Willie Mullins. I live on 119 Foulwood Circle. I've lived there for 47 years. The new ordinance that they want to pass to put 50, and they drafted up as townhomes, it's not townhomes. You can call it all you want to. It's apartments. They did the same thing with Hazelwood. It's going to be nice apartments. Well, right by there now, see if it's nice apartments. It's not. Chicken boxes at the end of the street where they stand and wait for the bus to come every morning. And we put up with that. We called it townhome about twice a month. They come over and pick it up. It's apartments. It's not townhome. Townhomes are something that people own and take pride in. Those are not going to be something people take pride in. The traffic is terrible over there now. I advise you, one morning, right over there, between 7, 8, 9 o'clock, to see if you want that in your front yard. I don't want it in my front yard. 52 apartments is way too many for that area. I'm going to save the rest of my comments because you tabled this. I'm going to save it till the next meeting. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Brenda Bailey.
My name is Brenda Bailey. I have lived at 450 Wood Drive for over 30 years. And I'm just asking that you deny the rezoning request for more apartments on Sandwood. Please put the needs of Lewisburg citizens above the wants of an outside economy. The second thing is, last meeting, y'all talked about reducing the speed limit on residential streets to 25 miles per hour. I just wanted to add that Tanglewood Drive and Sandwood Drive are very curly and have trees beside the road. And as one of my neighbors had already pointed out, most of the drivers do not stop at the stop sign. So it's a really dangerous area. Plus, if we put more apartments over there, it's going to be more dangerous. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one is Larry Bratson, Mr. Bratson.
Good evening, my name is Larry Bratson. I live at 929 North Main Street. I hope all y'all doing well tonight?
Yes.
I'm here about two issues. First of all, this, the law that y'all said in our path to track cans, which is another broken promise that my predecessor said. There are, this is not Way Forest, this is not Raleigh. You have a lot of houses in this town that have very long driveways. You have people like myself who are disabled. You have elderly people, a lot of elderly people in this town. You need to quit breaking promises and go back to what you said when you dropped the cans off in the first place, instead of making us have to drag them all the way out the street. This is ridiculous. This is, y'all need to stop breaking promises to us. That's, y'all are here for us, not us for you. The other issue I have is on Smoke Tree. I've talked to the police department before and they stopped it, but now it's back to the fact that the high school students are coming out of Smoke Tree, running that stop sign, and they're going to end up getting hit because people fly up Main Street. But both these issues need to be addressed and resolved immediately. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak, but I had trouble getting across because of the light. I'm from Tanglewood.
We will allow it, sir. Just come forward and.
Up here, I did want to explain, that is been tabled, not because we want to waste your time, but if those of you who were here in August, remember we tabled it for the developer to do a traffic impact analysis and maybe do some stormwater studies as well. And they've informed Terry this morning that they're not quite ready yet. So that's why it's being delayed another month. It's that we're waiting on information from them.
I apologize. I was trying to get here a little earlier.
No, you're fine. I just, for transparency sake, I did want to share that it's not our delivery delay, it's the developer.
Yes, sir. I'm just curious about, has anybody done a study as far as the traffic and the runoff and all that kind of thing? Because I have not seen any kind of, you know, due diligence as far as what we're going to do as the impact to the neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was explaining.
I'm sorry.
Hopefully we just go down the agenda so Terry can explain why it's being delayed. But since we did it.
So we don't have any of that information yet?
Not at this time.
Yeah, we were going to allow Mr. Satterwhite to clarify as to why we are tabling it. He's going to come up when we got to that item, even though we had tabled it. He had asked to come forward to inform you of why we are tabling it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just say, all of you who have came tonight and voiced your opinion and concerns about the various issues that are happening in Lewisburg, I want to assure you that none of this goes through our ears and nothing is done about it. You may not see an immediate result, but we take your concerns very seriously. I have visited the Tanglewood area. I've seen that traffic there early in the morning, when you could barely drive through there. I've seen that. And I can imagine a cluster of new apartments or whatever that will bring more traffic into there. You see? That's not an issue that we're just going to just pass it by. So I want to assure you, every comment that you've made here tonight will be taken into strong consideration and advice. Item number seven, resolution to accept deliveries for water, AIA grant. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. So a couple of years ago, the town was awarded funding in the amount of $150,000 for an asset inventory assessment of its water system. And the resolution that you received wraps up the project. Once that's adopted, and then we will receive a presentation from our consulting engineer. So to conclude the project, I'm asking that you'll adopt the resolution provided for the water AIA grant.
Any questions for the council from Mr. Brown?
Is there a match?
No, it's not a match.
It says right here, five percent. That's something that we budgeted for this year, the five percent match.
I would have to defer to Sean, I don't think we did.
No, no, there's, there's not a budget. It's not, we did not include that.
Gary, was there five percent? Not that.
Yes. All of the asset inventory and assessment grants require a local match. And for Lewisburg, and it's all based on economic condition, and Lewisburg was five percent, so it was $7,500. And that would have been paid when the grant was offered and accepted by the town probably about four, five years ago.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay. By the way, the gentleman that you just heard from is Gary Flowers. He's with Municipal Engineering. He's our town engineer and he will be speaking in a little bit.
All right. Yes, yes.
I'd like a motion to approve it.
When is he going to do his presentation?
After the first.
Okay, sorry. I was looking for a separate item. I just want to jump the gun.
Okay, give it a second. It's been moved in property second that we approved the resolution confirming the completion of the state project number H-AIA-D-20-0200. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, resolution to apply for grant funding during the fall 2025. Mr. Brown.
In order to apply for fall grant funding for the fall 25 round, we need to adopt a resolution as part of the grant application. This round of funding, we are asking, our project will consist of requesting funds to discuss and study the water treatment plant's flood disposal, Green Hill Pump Station upgrades again, as well as a 2026 sewer asset inventory assessment, which we would focus on our seven lift stations.
Any questions from the council? To Mr. Brown?
So if we apply for this now, Mr. Brown, when will we hear back? Possibly if we've been accepted or denied.
I would ask Gary.
Generally, the State Water Infrastructure Authority will meet in early February and then review all the recommendations from the Division of Water Infrastructure. We actually scored the applications, so you'll find out about mid-February.
My concern here is the statement that reads that six out of seven of our lift stations are in need of significant upgrades. These upgrades, how imminent is it that we get the funding to do the repairs for the community?
Our stations aren't functioning. They're just old, many of which have been pieced together and I would say surpassed a useful life. And does a great job of keeping us going, but we're looking at pumps, rails, possibly control panels, things like that, generators.
So is there a plan B for us if we're not awarded the grants financially to get these upgrades in place for the community?
If we don't get the grant, an alternative would be using the internal knowledge of the staff to, you know, focus and build a plan for each station and for presenting to you guys for to borrow funds.
I'm not, I'm not disputing the magic of our staff. They've done an awesome job keeping us afloat, literally, right? I'm just worried about with continued growth and the outdatedness of where we stand now. I'm afraid that the, in the danger of it going down would cripple our community. So I don't think that we can't apply for the grant.
Any other questions? If not, yes. It's been moved in property second that we approved the resolution to pursue grant funding for three projects as presented, while Green Hill Pump Station. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, resolution to accept deliveries for water, wastewater AIA grant. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So similar to the water asset and inventory assessment, we also received $150,000 for assessing our wastewater system as part of the grant. We, I'm asking that you'll adopt the resolution to accept the deliverables. And after this adoption, I'll turn it over to Gary Flowers, our consulting engineer. He's got a 10 to 15 minute presentation on these deliverables. And once that's done, it'll be wrapped up.
Same thing. This is something that years ago we applied for, paid for.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we get a motion?
Absolutely. Second.
Okay. It's been moved in property second that we adopt the, the motion to approve the resolution confirming the completion of the state project E-AIA-W-20-0193. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Satterwhite to just come forward. Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got to ask Gary Flowers to come forward and present the deliverables for the water AIA grant.
All right, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone, Mayor, council members. I'm Gary Flowers. I'm with Municipal Engineering in Garner, North Carolina. We are your town consulting engineers. I've actually been working with the town of Lewisburg going back to the late eighties and early nineties, a couple of different firms, first with Pearson and Wippen, which some of you may be familiar with, and Micah Questa in particular, and then Earth Tech later on, and then now at Municipal Engineering for the last nine years. But I'm here tonight to present a little PowerPoint presentation to just let you see what we've been working on as far as the asset inventory assessment programs that the state funded for you all back in 2020. First off, usually these things take about anywhere from two to four years. Of course, obviously, this was funded right before COVID. So that affected everyone's timeline, but here we are. We're done and I'm going to present the findings and some recommendations to you all tonight. I'll try to keep the presentation brief, but just a little bit of explanation about the AIA grant program. It was established by the Division of Water Infrastructure back in 2018. And the purpose of it is to provide some grant funding to towns so that they can start to develop tools and ways of proactively dealing with their water and wastewater utilities, rather than being reactive, which is the case in a lot of small towns. Nothing gets fixed until something breaks. And that's usually at the point when the damage is the most severe and it's also the most costly to repair. So in February, the town of Lewisburg was awarded a water and a wastewater for $150,000 each with a five percent match, which was $7,500. And we started working on those and basically I'm going to go through the water part of that, then we'll go to the wastewater part and then we'll just close it up. If anybody's got any questions during my presentation, feel free to stop being asked. And then at the end of it, I'll open it up for any question. Okay, part of the water system work that we did was to develop a water system hydraulic model. So basically what a hydraulic model is, is you gather all your information from your pipe sizes, the materials of the pipe, whether it's plastic, ductile iron, cast iron, galvanized, you'll do the sizes of your pipes. And then you take data from your water tanks and also your hydrant flows. And those flows were provided to us using by the fire departments because they had to do testing to get their certification from state fire marshal. So basically what that does is the water model takes all that information, puts it into a digital computer model. And basically you can simulate how the system works. And the benefits of that are, is if you do have some areas, you can, you can look at the model and you can determine where you may have areas of low pressure. If you get complaints about brown water, as well as low pressure or water that smells, sometimes you can use those water models to pinpoint the exact areas where that problem is starting to, here it is. Another thing you can use, and I think this will be very beneficial to Lewisburg in the future, considering all the people that are beating a path to come here and live, is you can use that, you can take that information, you can take information from people who want to come here, whether it be businesses, industries, or residential communities, and you can input their demands for water into this model. And you can use it to predict if you will need to make improvements to your infrastructure in that area, like increased pipe sizes, so that you can adequately serve everybody, including the new residents, without sacrificing service to your existing customers. And then the other benefit of that is, is like every five years, your fire departments have to be certified by the state fire marshal. So usually they have to go around and they have to flow test all these hydrants. Once all these hydrants are input into the water model, then at the end of that five, every five years, an engineer, which we have a master modeler, who's also a professional engineer in our office, he can review that for you. And for a much smaller fee than it would take for manpower to test all your hydrants, they can use the data that's, that's in the water model, they can use that to get your certification from your fire marshal. So it's a very beneficial tool to have and we have that available. If the town ever decided it wanted to purchase the modeling software and train someone in-house to do it, or you can always rely on us. I mean, we have, we offer those services as well. But the model is there, it's calibrated and it's good to go.
How expensive is it?
I'm sorry?
How, how much does it cost?
The software? Probably for a town the size of Lewisburg, probably I'd say between $7,500 and $10,000.
Thank you.
It wasn't. And then the other thing we were working on, and well, here we go. Here's some of the data that we've actually generated, just to show you just the sort of thing. The area here on the left is actually the network model of the town's water system. The graph up at the top, basically, it's, it just shows how dynamically your water supply, in other words, when your water plant generates money and puts it into the system, and then your tank's obviously empty. So you can sort of, you know, you can tweak those things. And you can also see what tank may be, you know, working overtime when another one. So there's all sorts of things you can do with this. There's a couple of them there that actually show some of the hydrant test data, the one on the far right. It's a lot of numbers. It does a lot of number crunching, but, but it does generate a lot of very useful data, especially to the town staff and in, and in the planning department too, whenever they give requests. And then, and in the planning department too, whenever they give requests for, you know, let's say a big subdivision or a lot of town halls. Okay, we'll get to the, the mapping of the system. The town did have a mapping system of its town, and I think it was done at Earth Tech years ago. The technology's gotten way better. The accuracy's gotten way better. Most of this stuff was located within about less than an inch through satellite GIS and GBS surveying. Our field crews went out and they located all the water valves, all the hydrants. Water meters were all located. Your tanks and everything were located, as well as the elevation of your tanks. And it was all put into a mapping system. It's, it's in ArcGIS format, which the town does have its own ArcGIS software. So the maps that are generated can be used by the town, they can be used by town staff. There's all, there's all sorts of useful tools for GIS. I mean, the fire department can download these things. And if they have a fire in a certain part of town, they can actually click on a hydrant, and the hydrant flows can be put into parts of the database. And they can actually look around and click on different ones to see which hydrant they get the most flow out of. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a very useful tool. And, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to take care of stuff and you don't know exactly where it is. And at least this does locate your water lines, the sizes of your water lines, the type of material it's made from. So it's a great planning tool, so when the town is starting to look at areas of town where they need rehabilitation because of old water lines, or under-sized water lines, in-water lines. Yeah, it, it helps to know what you've got before you can start thinking about what you need to do. The next slide here, this is just, I know it's small and hard to read, but and then Terry has all this stuff on his computer. Lee has a PDF. I just gave him the PDF, the deliverables for the mapping today. He has PDF files, so anybody that wants a copy of the map, of the overall map, can get it from the town. And we've also put together a, a map book, which contains big eleven by seventeen insetts. And we have a grid system set up on an overall map, so you can see a larger picture of certain areas of town. But all of the lines and, and the hydrants and, and all of your water system infrastructure assets are shown on this map. Okay, we'll get to the sewer system. Part of the, the very first part of the sewer system we did was we got with town O and M staff. And we asked them where were some of the worst sections of town as far as their sewer system goes. And we came up with, and, and we had to do it within the budget, within a hundred fifty thousand dollars. But we came up with about twelve thousand feet of sewer line. And, and like a lot of towns, a lot of small towns, and a lot of towns in general that have had sewer systems for a length of time, a lot of that pipe is, is old clay pipe. Most, almost all of modern sewer pipe is either PVC or it's ductile iron, and it's very robust. Clay pipe is not. Clay pipe is very brittle. The reason they used it back in the old days was because people dumped everything into the sewer, and that included industrial waste. Well, clay is almost inert as far as, I mean, you can pour acid in the clay pipe and it will not harden. It'll melt PVC and it'll corrode ductile iron. But pretreatment programs at wastewater plants have sort of done away with that kind of stuff. But clay pipes are very brittle, and they were put in in a day when, you know, engineering techniques for, for burying that type of stuff and covering it up are just not what it is today. So a lot of the pipes have sagged over the years. Traffic over roadways and stuff have worked their way down. They've cracked. I mean, you know, that utility companies, you see them running cable all underground with this horizontal directional drilling stuff. It's not unusual for us during a sewer assessment to see a telephone or cable, TV cable, run right through the middle of a sewer. They won't do that with ductile iron. That will stop them dead in their tracks. They might do it with PVC, the clay pipe. Now only, it'll, it'll break the pipe up. It just makes a huge mess, and nobody knows about it unless you did that. But we did that, and like I say, we were limited by budget. But it's twelve thousand feet of the worst, worst, worst pipe. And I'll show you the areas that we're talking about now. Oops, got a little head on the sound. Okay. Most of the areas were in the older part of town, like Beam Circle, Main Street, up around the college. We did do Bickett Boulevard between, between Bun Road and the River. We also did an area off of Western River Road. And, and we did an area up by the, in the old neighborhood there by the water plant. And those were, all of those were eight-inch clay pipes. And I'll get to show you all the neat stuff that you find in an old sewer pipe. And so if you look, for example, on Beam Circle, clay pipes have joints every four feet. And they were put in seventy years ago, so those joints have long since decayed. So water, you know, roots love wastewater because it's got a lot of nutrients and all sorts of stuff in it, water. And so you get a lot of roots, and roots can really clog up a sewer pipe. The little one off Beam Circle, that's just a buildup of grease. And that comes from just people, when they're cooking grease or whatever, down your sink. And the other one over here is the result of a clay pipe that's been in the ground about seventy years. It's all misaligned. You've got pipe sags, which when you have sags, the solids drop out. And eventually they build up, they clog the pipes. Here's just a few more. Again, you've got an old service tap over here in the left. They call them hammer taps because it's clay pipe. They usually just take a hammer and just knock a hole in the pipe. If you live in an old house, you've probably noticed some of your plumbing into your sinks the same way. They just bust out your drywall and put a pipe in. And of course, everything that you crawl through that hole will get through it. And then here's a pretty bad spot there off of Bickett Boulevard. And that's probably a result of that road being as heavily traveled as it is. And you've just got old pipe there. I mean, it's got, there's a complete part of that pipe at the top just missing. It's no longer there. And then, of course, on the right is on Main Street, probably up near the college. I mean, you can see that that root wad is almost completely blocking that pipe. And then these are just, there's a root wad, and you've got a sag, which is why you see water accumulating in the bottom of the pipe, and it always sits there. So that's just a few of your sewer defects. Now we'll get to your manholes. Most of the old manholes in town that were built with these clay sewers, they're brick. Okay, and brick has mortar, and they have a lot of joints. And over the years, that mortar will go bad. And so you can see over here on the left, you've got roots coming in. Well, if a root can come in, then water can come in. So this is where you get groundwater infiltration. Okay, and of course groundwater infiltration along with inflow is what, is what we call inflow infiltration or INI. And that's what ends up that at the sewer plant. So your plant treats whatever goes to your plant. It doesn't care if it's raw sewage or if it's stormwater. And you don't want to treat stormwater. So the more stormwater you treat, the more your treatment costs are going to be, and the less efficient your plant is going to be. So that's why it's, it's incumbent to try to get rid of as much of the inflow infiltration as possible. So, and these brick and your sewers, all those cracks in the sewers that get when your groundwater table's high, all that groundwater infiltrates in pipes. So you're seeing some, just some of your typical, and most of those brick manholes are very small. And they're very confined. A lot of the cast iron steps that were put in years ago have just corroded away. So if a man was to go down there, he would have to be dropped in on a cable with a harness. Should do it anyway, that way anyway, but and then you've got areas around, and you can see the sewer pipe coming in where you've got areas where the rigages is. So that's probably just soil on the inside there. And if you look at this one down here, I mean, I, I can't imagine anybody wanting to go into those first two on the left. I mean, those things are disgusting. There's just a lot of stuff built up on the walls there. They look like they've been patched probably half a dozen times each. And it's just not a good, it's just not, you know, achieving a good flow through those manholes. The one on the right, however, is a fairly recent one, and I put that in there for comparison. You can notice how, I mean, relatively clean it is. And that's what your manholes should look like. And those are concrete manholes, so the only joint in those are about every four feet. And those are, have been sealed with plastic, so you don't get the kind of, you don't get roots, and you don't get water infiltration into modern cast iron manholes. And then the third component that the, of the assessment was smoke testing. All of the twelve thousand feet of line that we TV'd, we also smoked tested it. We plugged up manholes, we generally put smoke bomb in there, generated, and then recorded where the smoke comes out of the ground. You can see the first two pictures here, those are missing cleanout caps on your sewer laterals to your homes and businesses. The one on the right is probably a store or cross connection. It's hard to tell. But the biggest problem and the most easily corrected way to get rid of inflow, which that is considered inflow because when it rains, the water is directly going into that. And just a little interesting fact, a missing cleanout on a four-inch service lateral, if it's in the right spot in a yard where it accumulates water, a one-inch rainfall will contribute eight hundred gallons of water to your sewer system, just one cleanout. And our experience has been when we do GIS surveying or when we do construction projects, that's the one thing that we find, because people hit them with their lawnmowers. You know, so I would recommend, if you know your cleanout cap is missing, to call the city. I'm sorry, the town of Lewisburg, and let them know. Because otherwise, they may not know. And a lot of people don't like them in New York because, like I say, it's in the way of lawnmower and, you know. But, but really, I, I mean, you, you think about eight hundred gallons during a one-inch rainfall, which is, one-inch rainfall is maybe a, a two-year event, which has, you know, it's got a fifty percent chance of happening in any year. Okay, I mean, just ten of those will contribute eight thousand gallons to your sewer system, just ten. And you've probably got two thousand in town. Okay? So that's one thing that is easily remedy, remedy. I mean, you're probably looking at a hundred dollar repair. So anyway, that's just a little bit of the sewer assessment. Okay? And as far as the wastewater system mapping goes, it's pretty much was done the same way we did the water system mapping. We located the manholes, we took the lids off, we shot down to get the depth of the manholes and the size of the pipes that come into the manholes. The materials, if we can determine that, which in most cases is clay. And we also located the service laterals, if we can find them. A lot of them, like I say, people don't like them. They're planted grass over them. We can't see them, we can't locate them, but we located all that we could find. We also located your pump stations as well as part of that. And the maps, Terry has those also in GIS. And Lee also has them in a PDF format overall, and also the mapbooks. And this is just a overall of the system, of the sewer system. And here is just a, a picture of the index and, and one of the inset maps. And I think there's probably about twenty, thirty of those inset maps in each section. And just to review the budget, like I say, it was a hundred fifty thousand dollar total grant. The town has seventy five hundred dollar match, which is, which is a five percent match. And the hydraulic model, seventy thousand, the GS mapping was fifty thousand. And we also, and the, we did a desktop assessment of the water system based on just stuff that we saw as we, as we did our GIS mapping system. And we also updated the town's asset management plan and their, and your ten-year capital improvement plan. We got those approved back in, I think in April. Those were approved, and there's a PDF copy of the updated one. Sean, you have a copy. The, the part of the deliverables is that in PDF format. And then the sewer budget was, by the way, the, the water and sewer grant caps are one hundred fifty thousand dollars each. And you can reapply every three years, which is why we're reapplying for sewer AIA this year to take a look at the, to also do some upgrades to your mapping because you have had some subdivisions that are in progress or been built since we did the mapping back in twenty twenty-one. We'll update that. We'll also update, continue to update your asset management plan and capital improvement plan. And I'll tell you why those are important here in a second. And, and, and we'll also do a, a, of all your lift stations and provide you with a summary of what we think the problems are and, and the solutions to that. And we'll also look at the, you know, we, we can look at the growth in the area too. Because you don't want to spend a lot of money on something, and then five years from now, you, you've got to increase it, like, like Green Hill. So just the, just the recap of the project deliverables, it's all the GIS mapping in the database. A copy of the condition assessment. Lee has a copy of the condition assessment, which has all the videos, reports, photographs, spreadsheets, and everything that was done during the condition assessment. And it also has shake files of all the smoke, so you can add that to the sewer GIS database as well. And, and there's an executive summary of the goals and everything, and the accomplishments we did this. And, and we also have a copy of this presentation in PDF format. So the, a, a couple of things here with the asset management plan and the required by the state. If you want to get, an asset management plan will get you ten, will get ten percent of your points right there by itself. Capital improvement plan will get two points. But it has to be updated every two years, which is why we've been, we've been updating both of these documents every couple of years as we apply for more applications. And with the, with the adoption of the most recent one back in April, then we're good to go until twenty twenty-seven. But you need to review your capital improvement plans every year. That, that should be a very dynamic document and, and a useful planning tool that'll help you sort of plan for these things. And the other thing is, is this, this plan sort of gives you a roadmap on, on how to operate your system proactively rather than reactively. Okay? And, and it also will it's also, like I say, it's very helpful when you go after state funding because the funding applications are, is a very competitive process. Okay? And it's based on all sorts of things, your econ, your current economic conditions. It's based on your water and wastewater rates. But then you have to have, but then like this sewer assessment, we used all of that information that we gathered. And we actually got the town a three-point-two million dollar loan grant package to fix some of these sewers that we just looked at in this presentation. And that information was useful in documenting your problem. And then the asset management plan and the current CIP gave us extra points on the application because it's a point-based application. So, so all of this stuff is very critical, like I say, as a guidance tool, but also moving forward as a, as a useful thing to, to, to get funding and to prepare competitive applications so that you, you know, can, can finish, you know, very favorably. Because like I say, money is very tight these days. The legislature right now, I mean, there's no more ARPA funding out there. That money's all gone. It was, it's all been allocated. So, you know, infrastructure is not always on the politician's list, you know. Everybody worries about all the stuff, all the pretty stuff above ground that you can see, but they don't worry about other things. Exactly. So, but anyway, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I appreciate everything that you did. It was very informational. Is it fair to ask your overall assessment of our water and sewer? Is it poor? Is it fair? Is it in good condition?
It's, you know, it's in line with other communities we see. You know, you're not, you're certainly not as bad off financially as. Some of our clients are, not only do they, are their systems in poor condition, they're also poor. Okay? At least the town of Lewisburg is in pretty good financial. At least the town of Lewisburg is in pretty good financial shape, at least from what I, from what I see. Because we do have to look at the financials of the town. We have to look at your last three years of audits. We have to submit those with every application.
Because I haven't seen those in years. So you're seeing something I'm not.
There's a website run by the local government commission, the LGC. You can go on that website and you can find the last three years' audits for each town in North Carolina. If there's a bid.
Yeah, it's common about ours.
We're getting there.
I deal with a lot of small communities and you all, you all, it's, it's not unusual. It's not unusual. You're not the only town behind on your audits. Okay? I'll say that. But from what I've seen of your audits, you know, your, your utilities revenues and expenditures are on the plus side. You know, that's not always the case when you're in a much smaller town that don't have the resources to do this.
That's our blessing.
So, yes, sir.
Something I've become aware of that we're going to talk about here in a few minutes is that we do not have a stormwater runoff policy just now. Is that having an impact on this?
Stormwater definitely has an impact on your wastewater system because whatever goes down the drain, if there's a cross connection with the sewer, leaking storm drain and it's near a leaking sewer, then it will migrate over there, especially if the sewer's lower, which most are. Storm drain is, by the way, is usually buried very shallow. Sewer is buried deep. So most of the times, if you've got a leaking storm drain up here, your sewer is going to be down here. So naturally water is going, you know, if it's leaking, this water is going to leak its way down to the sewer.
If you have a stormwater policy, you're going to get less stormwater going into your
Stormwater policy that's backed up by stormwater. You know? So, yeah, no, I mean, I, you know, I recommend every town should have, you know, some kind of stormwater management plan. And the state does offer grants periodically. They've not offered any for the last year, but they do offer grants. And I think those are up to $400,000 to help towns establish stormwater plants. And they also offer grants for repairing stormwater problems. They do have issues with their stormwater infrastructure that needs construction and needs upgrading. So, I mean, there's a lot of resources there with the state.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just want to take this opportunity just to say that we at municipal appreciate the opportunities that you all give us and we, we hope to continue this relationship.
Okay. I briefly will take this a moment or two and ask Mr. Satterwhite to come up and just, uh, just share some information on that zoning map amendment, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'd first like to say thank you again to the citizens of Lewisburg for voicing their opinions on the proposed application zoning over on Tanglewood for the townhomes. Again, to echo what the mayor said, we do hear all addressed concerns and we do respond to them. I want you to know that, that we do. I have heard everyone's concerns and that is the reason, as Councilman Baker said, that we did require the developer to do a full TIA. That means that they should have analysis prepared, including trip generation, intersection analysis and mitigation, possible mitigation for stormwater, excuse me, not stormwater, but for traffic. And unfortunately today, the developer let me know that they were not ready with those reports. So that's the reason why it was tabled. But I did hear concerns that maybe some people weren't aware of the notification of the hearing. So I personally, I want you to know that I personally went to every residence on Tanglewood and Tanglewood and personally delivered the letter notice about the hearing. Unfortunately, I'm sorry again for wasting your time, but the developer just wasn't ready with their analysis. So we'll hear, we'll have it here again in October. And hopefully the developer has a bit of a change of plans. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You know what I'm talking about, we talked about already. We got a major stormwater issue up there. Absolutely. All right. One of my best friends is a stormwater expert and I was with him last week and I said, what's the issues over there on Tanglewood? I said, isn't the developer going to have to? He said, no. If you don't have a stormwater ordinance in your town, they, it defaults to the state, which you said we do.
And, and let me clarify because I just morally searched on that. In our code of ordinance, we do have a caveat that says that developers are responsible for maintaining stormwater control measures. So in perpetuity. So once they install these stormwater measurement ponds, retention ponds, excuse me, they are responsible for maintaining.
That's not happening. But the point he was making is that the state standard is very poor. All right? The state only requires the developer to capture one inch of rain. And as he pointed out, last year we had 12 times we had more than that much rain. And in that case, that stormwater just goes downhill. And that's Tanglewood. And these folks are going to have all this water going down into their yards unless we specify and demand that this developer does a better job of stopping the stormwater. The second thing is, and it's in his plan, he's just talking about retention ponds. Retention ponds are ugly and dangerous. All right? These are just bodies of water unless they are fenced in and locked, they're attractive nuisances. They're a good place for kids to drown. They also, if they're not maintained, they, they create mosquito problems and they are frankly ugly. All right? There are better ways to do this, but they're more expensive.
That's an excellent point that you made, Councilman Stover. And yes, the way that we fix that is when the developer comes for the hearing, we can attach conditions to their program as long as they agree to them in writing. And if they don't agree to them in writing, the town council has the power to deny the application completely. So we, we suggest those conditions. Like you said, maybe making the stormwater to be able to capture three inches of rain or like I said, traffic control devices, maybe maintaining those ponds with landscaping around them or maybe even fencing. Those are all conditions that.
We have good examples of how to do it the right way over at Lewisburg High School. Where you have bio retention ponds, which don't even look like a pond, they're just grass.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, we can, we can recommend that the developer put in those measures and attach those conditions to the application.
But I think we need to go a step beyond that. We need to come up with our own stormwater retention policy. And again, we have one. 80% of the towns in Lewis and Franklin, 80% of the towns in North Carolina already have that. And he said, there's an excellent one over in Wilson, it's online. You can just go and look it up.
Should we have that in place before we, are you with them next month?
I think we ought to, we'll get it seriously. One of the problems I see in town is our former, well, couple back, town planner went crazy about requiring parking lots. We got probably a thousand unused parking spaces in this town. And what do those parking spaces do? They create stormwater runoff. They create heat. Not doing anything to deal with this. We don't do something about this, our stormwater problem gets worse. And I think the people of Tanglewood have already pointed this out. And I think we got to address those concerns before we do anything with this project.
I'm not a short time to talk about something like that, but I'm all for tasking theory with researching it, comparing to comparable municipalities and for the future of that. And then as he said, for this specific case, if it's not ready, still attach the conditions as if we did.
I agree.
Terry, you have a question. Would you not rezone this property? The, the developer will not be able to build that amount of townhomes in that space, but they would still be able to build a serving number of townhomes in that space.
That's correct.
So what would, if we would not approve this amendment to the zoning, how many would they be able to build then?
Right now, in, in their designation, zoning designation is R2, which is medium density. I did a recalculation, I think it was about 25 to 28. I'm pretty sure they could build by right now.
So today, if they wanted to build 25 to 28, we have no say.
Correct.
Can we specify some issue, you know, with the stormwater with that?
Uh, not, not by right.
This current zoning allows it.
Current zoning allows it, so they would be allowed to do it by right.
That's where we need to get an ordinance that way.
Um, but I think it would be grandfathered in since they're starting this project, but does not have it. I don't know.
Yeah, they would have permanent choice if they put in their application before we changed the rule. So the best way.
All the reasons to adopt it, so this doesn't happen elsewhere, it can be a lesson learned. But, yeah, that was my other point. We tabled it and we were researching it.
Those, those, those questions and things should be taken up at our next meeting. We can have a full discussion then. And all of the citizens who have concerns, please come back. Come back next month and we will continue this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
Well. Okay. Item number 11, discussion of curbside recycling. Dr. Stover.
Minor issue. We have again been with the folks from the state. First, I'd like to address a couple of the comments that were made. People are commenting that now little old ladies are going to have to carry their trash cans to the street. That's not correct. There is provisions in the new policy. Anybody who is disabled and unable to get their trash can to the street can apply at a town hall and continue her backyard collection. But why did we come up with this new policy? Well, part of the reason is we're spending close to a half million dollars right now on solid waste management. We have a $300,000 plus budget. Plus we're spending $180,000 of the street budget to pick up yard waste and bulk waste. Lee has done an excellent job of reworking this to bring us up to modern standards. Hopefully in the future, this is going to result in a significant reduction in our costs. We don't know what that's going to be because we haven't done it before. So we, that's why we haven't made any changes in either our rates or our tax rate until we see what happens when we make these changes and bring Lewisburg into the 21st century. But one of the things that we are not providing that every other town in Franklin County does is that's curbside recycling. The folks from the state have made it clear there is funding going to be available after the first of the year, which would help us in getting the cans and the things we need to set this up. So I think we need to be in a position to make application come after the first of the year to set up a curbside recycling system here in Lewisburg. This would do several things. One, it would provide a new benefit to our citizens. Two, people are complaining, well, I only got one can, I'm going to fill it up. I filled mine up yesterday. Having curbside recycling, you get another can. And that's where a lot of your now trash can go into the recycling can and be picked up by the town and properly disposed of, but not going to the landfill. This will, our landfills in this state only have a 25 year, there's only 25 years of space left. That's tiny. Most states have 100 years. So we're fast filling up our landfills. Plus it's environmentally responsible. So what I would like, I don't think we need to do anything tonight. I just think we need as a council to make it clear that we want to move in this direction to have curbside recycling available to our citizens by, this is time, by January next, not January, by the next physical year, July.
Could we link it up to the citizens to request it? I mean.
Uh, that is one option. We, here, this is one of the things we're discussing with the state. There are several different ways to do this. Most towns, it's sort of a mandatory thing. Basically it's included one way or the other in their solid waste bills. All right? Some people, some towns have a separate bill for recycling. Some it's just included in their solid waste. There are, there is the option, you can make it optional. The citizens can apply for, you know, to make a decision whether or not they want to have it or not. If they do, they get an extra fee on their bill.
Yeah, I don't think anyone in our community wants any more additional garbage fees, considering the fact that we're providing half the services now and not cutting our fees.
Okay.
So I don't think.
As Lee has pointed out, if we, we've already been given an estimate on doing the household curbside by a commercial company, which is about one, about 20% of what our current budget is. What they said with 100 and.
Curbside collection was estimated at 120,000.
120,000. We're spending a half million. Now that includes yard and solid waste.
Well, that doesn't make any sense to me. He's saying that we could have curbside pickup once a week for 120,000, but yet we're doing curbside pickup once a week, but we're paying what, 300, 500,000 dollars for?
When he's also moving the yard waste and the bulk pickup back into the solid waste. Okay? Which is not included in that 100,000. So the whole point he made to us earlier is he wants to have a year's worth of data so we could then make an intelligent decision on what our budgeting would be. I'm hoping with that kind of savings that we might be able to do the curbside recycling for what we're already charging, maybe even reduce the fee. All right? We don't know yet. But that's something we need to look at. Also, the state said if people would like, there are two recycling companies that receive this. Sunoco, which is over, I think towards Garner, and Waste Management, which is over in Mooresville. Both offer free tours. So if people would like, on the council, we could arrange to go over there and see what the operation is like. And there's been some questions, do this, is, does recycling really happen? Well, it does. Okay? And these folks are willing to show us how they do the recycling. You know, anytime we want to go over.
I'd be more interested in getting a quote for them for what their cost would be to contract that service. I'm not against recycling pickup, but all summer, we've talked about it, but what do you do with it? How much does it cost to pay someone to take it from us? Betty?
Yes. I was going to say, during the recycling, that mean everybody that's going to do recycling have to get an extra trash can from the town.
Well, that's what the state will help us pay for.
So we will not have to pay that five dollars.
Depends on how generous the grant is. But there is grant money to help pay for these cans. And the next grant cycle is in spring.
I had five trash cans, well, I still have five trash cans sitting there. But with the new thing coming up with the town, I was forced to get a new one. But if I put anything in that other trash can, you're not going to take it. Suppose I decide I want to have a party this weekend. So that mean it's going to have to sit there. But the bag, but you can't put them on top, you can't put them on another trash can.
We've already gone through that, okay? I'm talking about making that better by having recycling.
I think you can make it better by altering this because we stood here and had a call by Mr. Brown, where he said that this is starting on September the first, yada, yada. Everybody's, I bet you my phone, people aren't calling to tell me that they love me anymore, they're telling me about the trash problem. But that's okay, I'll, I'll accept it.
People want to pay more taxes and.
We, we paid enough, we're paying off the nose and we're not getting the services that we deserve here. So anyway, Mr. Brown stood up here and said, we're all going to get a letter. In the letter, there's going to be a document in case you have a medical issue, where we all get to go to the doctor and pay fifty dollars for a cocaine to get a doctor's signature on something that didn't come in the envelope along with everything else. So where's that document at? Now it's not starting in September first, now it's starting at a later date. Um, I see trash laying around town that has never been there before. I try to be very conscious about my garbage, but my husband, who has medical issues, has a problem hauling our garbage can down the driveway. It's heavy, it's awkward.
Mine is, mine is bigger than I am.
Well, there you go, there you go. And I am all for working efficiently and saving money, I'm a fan of all of this, this is enough.
Here's one thing that we've done, uh, that is a job which our new grant writer that is coming on board can look for. Their full-time job will be looking for grants for any service that we may want to provide and subsidize, we can look for grants. The gentleman just said that there are grants out there for infrastructure. We can get that person to look for those grants. They are, I'm sure that there are grants for, you know, recycling. You see, this person will be one hundred percent looking for grants. Then if we are successful, and I'm confident that they will be successful in finding some grant, then we won't have to worry about taxpayers' money. This will subsidize, subsidize these projects that we run.
I think one of the major issues is that when they first came out, it was no change. You're not going to have to do anything, that's it. And then now, as the gentleman said, we're going back on our word to the citizens, you know? And that, that's not a good look, that's not a good look for us. And I don't think the citizens really had input when they came to discussing this. I know we discussed it, but I don't think the citizens had their input of, of it right here. Because to me, I mean, I'm sorry, it's ridiculous, once a week in my neighborhood, it's going to be on top of the house.
It's a lot of change, and change is never easy, but I think they're reducing the frequency and removing backdoor pickup. It's, it's a double whammy.
So I make a motion that we just keep our trash policy the way it's been for the last five years.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second that we keep our trash policy as we've had it for the last five years?
Forever.
So we have the new cans, but you don't have to.
We have twice a week pickup, backdoor pickup, and it's done.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Now, will you use the trash?
We can use it. This, this crap of one can and.
We have, we have a motion on the floor and a second. So is there a question within this motion that anyone would like to say?
Are they going to pick up as many trash cans as still?
All five, Betty, all five.
Party on, girlfriend.
We just already put out that they're going to just use the town's trash can. Alright, so we're going to go back to the nineteenth century.
The larger can twice a week, I think.
So, so my motion is that we have twice a week pickup, backdoor pickup, and we use the new trash cans first by the town.
I said.
Okay, it's been moved in property second. Now, all in favor? All opposed? So let the record show that we moved back to those and. Okay. We're at, uh, number thirteen, training reimbursement agreement and travel policy, Mr. Meldlin.
Mayor, Town Council, thank you. In front of you is a request to amend the personnel policy related to training reimbursement. As you know, our proximity related to Wake County, Durham County, we train employees, we, we spend roughly thirty-five hundred a year to five thousand training employees, get them certified in their jobs, and then they leave us and go somewhere else. Uh, this new policy is asking that you, uh, consider this request and it would take effect, actually, we would actually ask you to retro it back to July first, um, and that anyone that we provide training for would be required to sign a document that says they'll stay with us a minimum of two years, and if they don't, then they will pay back the portion of training that we've invested in them. So I'm asking for you tonight to consider this motion and approve this amendment to our personnel policy related travel and training.
Any questions for Mr. Meldlin regarding this?
Mr. Meldlin? How can we retro it? I mean, wouldn't this be something that new employees should have to sign?
So, so any, any employee that would have taken it effective July first, we would ask them to sign that policy because most of them, if they're in training, have not completed the full training. Now.
I agree with this policy, I'm not positive about making it retro because did those employees know at the time that they were hired that this was going to be the case?
No, ma'am, but I think any policy update that we would implement throughout would impact all employees. So if, if we didn't make that impact, then what we're saying is anybody that was here before today's date, then you're not impacted, you can continue to train and get their certifications, and then we're paying for it and then they leave us.
Okay, so is every employee going to have to sign this?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody, anyone that we pay training for is where, once they actually agreed to the training, then they sign the paperwork stating, this is a commitment, you're making a two-year commitment to the town of Lewisburg.
As long as everybody has.
It's not new employees coming on, it's anybody who started training since the fiscal year.
I think that should be approved.
It's been moved in property second that we adopt the travel and training policy and the reimbursement agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, leased private parking lot behind two twelve West Nash Street, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. So as you're aware, several times throughout the year, the town shuts down the parking lot for various events adjacent to the amphitheater, it's shut down in several different ways. And throughout the last year, what's come up time after time in the planning meetings is the difficulties we run into with vehicles and or their owners that are parking in this parking lot behind two twelve West, West Nash, which is adjacent to two ten West Nash. And in those discussions, it came up, well, what if we maintain control or responsibility for that parking lot? Because it is private property surrounded by town property. And Mr. Purdue reached out the other day and said, hey, that small parking lot has become available. If you're interested, um, we'd like to get a hundred dollars a month. And so I'm asking you to consider this. What it would do for staff is it's going to help us maintain the safety of residents that are back there for the events, and it's also going to allow us to better provide the services throughout the events. We'd be able to shut it down, we wouldn't have to worry about arguing with people that are trying to park there and open barricades and drive through as attendees are in the vicinity, so.
My question is, are you just talking about the two spaces behind the building itself? Like, see this, is it just this area?
Yeah, right from the back of the building to there. This is probably forty feet by sixty or eighty feet long.
So it's directly adjacent to two ten.
Yes, and directly behind two twelve.
So are they, are they willing to do a, like a five-year lease?
I'm sure he would consider it. Initially, he just said we'll do a hundred dollars a month. I think the long-term lease is, is a good idea. It makes the most sense.
This is the section where, where the, where the cooks concentrate mostly on barbecue and burgers, is that right?
No, that's in between the two buildings, this is directly behind the beauty nook.
Oh, okay.
There's only two cars that can park back there without blocking.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Have we done a pre-audit? It's, we'll put it out here, it's not much, but again, we do have to figure out where we're taking. I did my fiscal refreshment recently. And it's correct, we are not supposed to approve things that weren't in the budget, even if it is a line item, we have to say we'll take it from this category and move it.
The, the suggestion was from Admin and Professional Services, because it would cover the whole, the whole town, all the different apartments.
You just saw my, those two parks.
Those two parking places.
Those two.
Directly behind the barber shop.
Okay, yes.
Where those two cars are right here, right here.
Okay, right here, but not this.
No, that's town where he owns that, it's just where these two cars are and that.
Yeah, that's small. Okay, so. We have a lot of problems with those two parks.
Any other questions? Alright, so we'll go as it is and.
Will we maintain control of this parking lot?
Yeah, once we, once we lease that parking lot, we may maintain control of that, so. To your point, I think we, if you approve this, maybe with the caveat that we request a five-year lease, if it's, if it's, uh, fiscally possible.
Alright, Council, got a good a motion to approve, perhaps maybe with that little caveat there or as is being presented?
I think we approve with the understanding that's a five-year lease.
Or a request of five.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in property second that we grant the town administration to enter into a lease agreement for the parking lot behind two twelve West Nash Street as possibly with, let's see, other twelve, with, with a five-year lease, okay? All in favor? All opposed? Alright, ayes have it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, next is our administrative report, Mr. Meldlin.
Mayor, Town Council, thank you. Our last Friday night, Friday nights on the tour will be September the nineteenth, and the band for our last event will be stealing tonight. We're in preparation for barbecue in the burg, which will be held October the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. And as you may be aware, Miracle League of Franklin County last year was the benefactor, and they raised an estimated ten thousand dollars for equipment for their children, and so they've asked if they could be a benefactor again this year, and we've said, okay, they provide their volunteers, they do all the work, we just provide the space for them to work, so we appreciate that. As our policy states, I advise you when there's changes in personnel, in staff, and our human resources director, Stephanie Davis, is no longer with the town, interim human resources director, Cliff Turner, who is retired from the town of Chapel Hill with thirty years of services working with the town a couple of days per week at this time to help us transition. And last but not least, we have our weekly one-on-one with LGC and PB Mayors. We're progressing with LGC and they're, they're happy with where we are. Just to give you a heads up, our audit is at the Report Writers, and we should have something hopefully within the next week or two, and I'll provide that with you all, the draft, as soon as we get it in. Um, so hopefully in the next two weeks, we should have something from. Yes, sir, yep. And then they'll be, they'll give us our adjusted entries, we'll make those entries, and then they'll start working on twenty-three, twenty-four.
You have an idea how long that's going to take?
Hopefully December is what they're telling me, because they cleaned up a lot of stuff, so. And I do know that LGC has reached out to PB Mayors to confirm that the cleanup that we've had to do, and PB Mayors has shared with them the cleanup that we needed to do, so. They're happy that this is just about finalized, so just wanted to give you all a heads up on that. And last but not least, Jennifer provided financials this afternoon as I was walking out. They're for you to review, if you have questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out, and we'll answer any questions we can for you.
Mr. Meldlin, I have a question. I know that last month we discussed the bowling services at Summit Drive, has the new company started?
We provided them, uh, we let Vess know that effective September first, I believe it's correct, that they would be complete, and I don't know if Juan has come out and started yet.
Juan has signed his contract and if they give him the door, he can go.
The other question I had is, can you explain to me why the town is mowing the property at College Park? A few weeks ago, they started mowing the front part of College Park, which clearly is not a piece of the town property, but the town was there today mowing it, and I was just trying to figure out why we are using taxpayers' money to use to mow private property. Mr. Brown, any ideas?
Sure. A while back, I don't, I don't remember the date, but it got brought up at a meeting that that area was getting grown up, and we could not get in touch with the property owners, so we decided to take, I think we're taking about four or five passes just at the curb line to keep it presentable.
And the expense of the person who owns it, are we billing them?
I don't think it's going through code enforcement.
Anybody else need their yard mowed? Because the town's going to free these guys. I, I'm just saying, I don't think that's fair. As, as, I, I love the town looking great, but that is the responsibility of the owner of that property, not the taxpayers paying for a developer to have a free lawn care service. Was it brought up at a meeting?
The unsightlyness was, I think.
It was, the, the unsightlyness of it was, was brought up.
Brought up at a meeting?
And, and actually, I think you, the one that brought it up, Councilman Staff. I, I do believe. I'm thinking about.
The fact that we're mowing it.
Right, no, I, I mean, I was thinking that basically what I recall was, you had mentioned that their site had become, I guess, a little overgrown, and I think we took it that we needed to do some work, so we did that, I think, Staff took that directive.
Did we take it through code enforcement? I mean, it's owned by a developer, for sure, they got the office to pay the town for mowing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, it's not that we cannot bill them, I mean, we can definitely do that.
Definitely building back.
Yeah.
I mean, there's plenty of other things we could, we can mow. That's, I, I don't recall specifically saying anything about that, but thank you.
That's, that's, that's why. We'll, we're going through code enforcement.
Thank you.
Sean, I have a couple quite hundred issues. First, we got a letter that said that we're appealing something to the LGC.
We did.
Was that all that?
We appealed, and we met today, and we were granted the appeal. Um, the state has the right, if you do not have your, uh, audits in, to withhold your sales and use tax, and we've had that. Uh, we were on the, last year, we appealed, and we won, this year, we've appealed and won.
We're getting there.
Yes, yes, sir.
That's right.
Yep.
Secondly, what are we gonna do about the parking situation along Sandalwood?
Um, that's a DMV. Tangle, you know, with, uh, that's a DMV, and they've been addressed that they need to address the parking.
We own the park, the street, right?
Right, and they're, we're vass that they not park along the street.
Why don't you put up a warning sign?
Been giving up the, the DMV, or the state says they'll do something.
Yeah.
So it's kind of our hands are tied that...
Yeah, last night, we own this street, I think, uh, DMV blocks behind the DMV, trying to make contact with the DMV. Email the homes that have DMV, like, please, I haven't heard anything more about it. I could reach out far, but I don't find out.
But that's their issue, that's not our issue, is we have illegal parking along, along Sandalwood.
We do, but you would be ticketing the citizens who are already going to the house of the DMV, you're not punishing the DMV.
Yeah. As Councilwoman Baker just said, we would be punishing our citizens, and we don't know that they're...
This is our citizens, it's the whole county.
Yeah, but it's people that have to go to the DMV, they don't wanna go, they wish there was a parking space, so like, a ticket is the last thing they need at the end of that day. It doesn't put pressure...
Right. We, we can do that. I think we probably need to strategically place them, so you can't get a car in between, and that, that may be, that may be somewhat of a cost, but we can definitely look into it. To do, if a car's ten feet, we do them every eight feet or something. We can't promise that a smart car, Mini Cooper, won't get in, but we can attempt to.
Well, we can start by design and see what happens.
Yeah, move on.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking. Okay, thank you. Item number sixteen, the mayor's report. Um, I'm little to report this month, um, other than, uh, my monthly, uh, visit with senior citizens, uh, delivering, uh, food boxes and care boxes to them as well. But I would like to say this, though, uh, as relates to the, the radios. Uh, I think it will be a excellent idea if we could look into ways that we could make those radios, uh, available to the group, uh, because they, they are very much into public service as well. See, their mission and goal is to help citizens all around and assist our first responders in, in, in responding to various issues that we're, that we face as well. These radios are something that, uh, you know, they're a surplus to us. And, uh, if we could help, I think, if we could help another organization who's dedicated to, to helping the community, I think we should do whatever we can to help them to make that happen.
Sean, you said you're just crossing a few t's, and you have to make sure that all's above board. I would also be for that, if we can't make it happen.
Okay. Alright, next is, uh, the police report.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Like always, I'm gonna try to make things as quick as possible. Um, Police Department received the agency trilogy from FBI leader with detectives Moore, Coker, and myself finishing, each of us finishing the trilogy. Uh, FBI leader sent us a plaque, it's in the police department. Um, some of the major investigations that we had, we did have a juvenile firearm to the magnet school campus. Um, it was an unloaded firearm, but the juvenile was charged in the matter. Uh, we had, if you saw it in the news, we had a teacher at Cross Creek that, uh, some discrepancies were found in his hiring documents, and he was charged with identity theft. Um, we've had several trainings. Officer Max Power graduated from K-9 training, K-9 Jaeger, uh, currently active on the street. Sergeant Rooker completed his supervisory leadership institute with FBI leader and has started, uh, law enforcement management institute through Wilson Tech. We have our competition for the police department. I know we, uh, we put out a flyer on Facebook, but I was, after the remodel, I was looking around, we got a lot of blank walls, so I thought, hey, what the heck? Let's have the community, if they want to, put in sort of art project, whether it's painting or drawing, what have you, photograph, and we would have, uh, the community vote via social media to see what they thought would look good on the department walls. So check out our Facebook page, I know there's a flyer, we're gonna get it reposted. Uh, several different groupings we've got. I believe kids, twelve and under, teenagers thirteen to nineteen, young adults twenty to thirty, and adults thirty-plus. In addition to that, I want to, want to remind the public that school has started back, so, in your best behavior on the streets, watch out for kids crossing, uh, bicycles and kids ride their bikes back and forth, and we will be on the lookout for speeders on Smoke Tree, and I will get with Mr. Satterwhite and the DMV to try to address some sort of parking issues on Sandalwood.
Um, whatever happened to our noise ordinance signs?
DOT, um, they are working on moving those.
I mean, they've been working on that for nine months.
It's DOT.
Yep.
It's DOT. That's their standard term of time.
So I think, I think we're nearing the end, though. I think we're nearing... Should have approval by, I wanna say by October, I'm, I'm pretty sure. And they said that we could attach them to already existing signs. So we have signs that are already existing and attach them to those.
Alright.
Alright, uh, Brown report?
I'll tell you, stand my name.
Okay, alright, thank you. And the next, number nineteen, uh, council comments, uh, in, uh, Councilman Clancy. Councilwoman Baker?
Hello, that, thank you for coming.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes, um, I'm glad to see all the guys this evening, and thank you for coming. Um, I'm still working with the Car-Tar, Vance County, and on September the twenty-fifth at Miles Magnolia, we are having our annual banquet there. And yours truly will be the emcee, because I will give over the gavel, and praise God. And, uh, this done once a year, and it's always going from county to county, so it will be in Franklin County, out at Miles Magnolia this year. And, um, we just, I've been dishing with seniors, and, um, just happy about that and the different things that's going on. And also, my group at church will be giving out our backpacks in October to homeless, and I look forward to doing that on my projects. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Ms. Diana?
Sure. Um, I would encourage anyone who's available on September the eleventh at eleven o'clock at the Franklin County Courthouse. Franklin County Firemen's Association is having a memorial service for nine-eleven. Um, it usually takes approximately about an hour, but it is, um, something that we shall never forget in a, um, respect to those who sacrificed everything for our country. So, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Woods?
I would like to thank everyone for coming. I would like to thank all the departments for all their hard work, what they do in keeping our town running. Um, the fire department, extra shout-out to the police department for their hard work in keeping our community safe. Um, I'm looking forward to the basketball court dedication on Saturday. And one, one more thing, I know we have the Friday nights on the tour, you know, and we have the barbecue in the bird, and I know this is a long shot, and I know it's been a long time, and I know Franklin County used to host it, the Children's Festival. That was a very momentous thing, I look forward to the Children's Festival. Every year, growing up, it was a big thing, and I would like to see this bird. I mean, we don't have to do it to that magnitude, but bring something back like that. I would, I would love to see, even if it's a community day when people are out doing it, I mean, just bring something back like that. Um, I don't know if anybody y'all remember the Children's Festival. It was a great event, like, everybody looked forward to coming to the Children's Festival. We would go out there, and you would have food and games, and the Lewisburg School would dance, would dance, and it was just a good community day, and I would love to see something like that to come back. We have the area, we have all that stuff. Um, I would love to see something like that, especially before they start building the, the complex and while we got that, that over there, but that's just my, and just be mindful of the students out catching the bus and, um, schools back, so just pray for us teachers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stone?
Uh, just want to add that Lewisburg Methodist Church will be restarting its open table on third Wednesday of each month. It's open to anybody who would like to come.
Okay. Thank you, council, citizens for coming out tonight. And, uh, item number twenty, did I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved in property second that we adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.